Good evening. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of May 24th, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. And Steve, we have on the screen for the folks at home tonight's agenda items. They would like to take a look and see if they -- just how long they want to hang on with us. Okay, very good. I'm gonna cut away for a moment. We're gonna begin this meeting. It's the second meeting of the month. However, we didn't have a first meeting. And so, we're going to start with the supervisor's report. And that is for the month of April, a statement ending April 30th, 2017. And I will read for you our closing balances. We began the month with an opening balance of $6,316,765, receipts of $257,999, dispersments of $523,347.26. That leaves a remaining balance of $6,51,418. You have in your packets some budget adjustments, working with our bookkeeper for your review. You will notice that the sales tax factor came in better than expected for the year. And we're happy about that. And our franchise fees came in, the fees that help us pay for Panda as well. We have a community preservation fund balance. I know Harry wants to see that balance.
Yeah, I already memorized it.
Do you have everything to memorize?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, Harry. I'll leave you that balance. It's over $700,000 we have, with a hundred and some odd thousand committed to the Stickel Farm, which is the farm that wraps around the Red Hook Church Cemetery. If there are no questions about the budget adjustments, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay. Harry, would you like to second?
Yes, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. We have our clerk's report. Here we go.
Clerk's report, April of 2017. Total local shares remitted to supervisor as town revenue,[235.62][235.65]$1,287.13. Amount remitted to New York State for ag and markets for the spade and neward program,[243.92][243.95]$67. Amount remitted to New York Department of Health for marriage licenses, $45. Amount remitted to New York State Environmental Conservation,[254.42][254.45]$765.22. For a total state, county, and local revenue of $2,164.35. Pursuing to Section 27, Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify the foregoing as a full and true statement of all fees and monies received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there a motion to approve the clerk's report?
So move.
Thank you, Harry.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, as usual, our next item is announcements. And I have a few announcements for the folks in the audience at home. The first is that Dutchess County will be holding its hazard, household hazardous waste disposal and electronics recycling event. It's June 24th. It's going to be held at the County Resource Recovery Agency. It's in the morning from 8:00 to 1:30. And it's open only to county residents. There is a registration and a $10 prepayment fee required. And hopefully, Steve, with the miracles of your camera, you can see that website where you go to register. If not, it's dutchesnewyork.gov and solid waste. The other item in announcements is we had a very nice note from the New York State Town Clerks Association. And they are informing us that our Town Clerks in McCann have been awarded the association certification as a registered municipal clerk. And it talks about the prestige associated with the award. And so, they're just telling us what we already know, which is we've got a really terrific town clerk. The next item we'd like to let you know is that the Memorial Day Parade, you know, we have a wonderful parade and festivities. On Monday, May 29th, we assemble at quarter after nine at the high school. The route is the same as last year, which was a change. You come out of the high school and you make a left and you go down Market Street. And then straight up Route 9 to Memorial Square, where there'll be a very nice ceremony by Bill Moore and company later that morning. You know, we try to, we're trying to recognize folks in our community who have achieved some recognition. And it's almost impossible to even attempt to do that properly. So, we highlight, perhaps at a mistake, certain individuals who have achieved a real designation. And I'd like to let you know that there are some kids who have achieved some great stature in the robotics world. They competed in the World Robotics Competition in Red Hook, and they received an award. There was, the Tivoli Fire Company had their annual ceremony where they recognized their members. And I would like to, let me just get rid of some of the border here. I'd like to show you the picture here of, oops, I've done two things, I apologize. But to the left is Charlie Booms. Charlie served on the Red Hook Fire Department for 30 years. And then moved over to the Tivoli Fire Department for 35 more years. He was recognized for 65 years of service between the two companies. And I think it's really quite remarkable. And we want to really, a shout out to Charlie. And just to say that, as most folks know, perhaps not everyone here in town, our fire companies are all volunteer. And the requirements to be a volunteer firefighter are increasing on folks. And we really rely on that, not only for our safety, but also to make it, you know, as affordable as possible to live in our community. And so, we congratulate Charlie. We have some resolutions, more Eagle Scouts. I mean, I think we're breaking records with Eagle Scouts with Troop 42. Liam O'Farrell, if you remember Liam, he was in that rather scary car accident on Feller Newmark Road along with his friend. And they both had to be airlifted. And they've, you know, they've been recovering. And Liam is being honored for all of his years of service and his dedication. And then we have another one. Coincidentally, his name is Darren Farrell, who is achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And there'll be a ceremony for him next month sometime. And I don't have up on the screen, but I'm very excited to report to everyone, after many, many attempts, many grant applications, that I received word late this afternoon, received several things late this afternoon. This one I was very happy about. It's a letter from our county executive. And I'll just briefly read the beginning of it. Dear Supervisor McKeon and Mayor Blundell, we did a joint application, the town was the lead applicant. I am pleased to announce that preliminary funding decisions for the 2017 Community Development Block Brand program year have been made. And your project, construction of a challenger field, has been recommended for $200,000. It was our pleasure to work with members of the county legislature, Community Development Advisory Committee, and other stakeholders to select the projects which best address both local needs and county priorities. And I, our county exec goes on to talk about, you know, the delay in the funding, that, you know, on the federal level, there's been some wrangling about whether or not CDPG funds will be available going forward. But this is very exciting. Many thanks to our county exec, our county legislator, Mickey Struinsky. And certainly, you know, I think it echoes the fact that if we just keep trying, we may get somebody to help us fund these projects. And for those of you who are not aware, we are going to construct a sports field that is going to be geared towards individuals with special challenges. And so, that is going to sort of kick off the construction of our, what we call our new Rec Annex Lands, but it's new as of 10 years ago. And so, we've been looking around for funding to get it started. And this is really great news. And I want to thank the board for supporting this and all the other applications. And we look forward to coming in front of you with the plan for the property, or revised plan for that property on Lidded Avenue.
This says...
Okay.
You're gonna tell John, the mechanics, in motion to obtain the $200,000 and put it to work?
Yes, we have to, we have to hire our engineers first to our sports field. Engineers to revise an initial plan that was done eight years ago or so. And then we'll have to go in front of our planning board, as we do with our new parcel that we acquired here adjacent to the Salcha. So, that's all I have for announcements, good announcements. And we're at that point in the meeting where we will take public comments. If you'd be kind enough just to come up to the microphone, if you'd like to tell us your name and address.
Can I hand out some papers?
Sure. Russell.
Since you were linked to this before the meeting, shall I put the pictures up on the screen?
Okay. Is this it?
Yeah.
Okay. You probably figured out I'm not very technologically proficient.
No, you seem to be mad on me pretty smoothly.
Well, I don't know, I just tried to make it larger. Oh, there we go.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Damian Brennan. I'm the president of Lewis August Jones Foundation, which runs Camp Rising Sun in both Clinton Corners and in Red Hook. I myself was a camper from Brooklyn in 1987. I have my 30th anniversary this year coming up. And two years ago, I was appointed president of the board. I've been visiting Red Hook about every year since 1987, both as a staff member of Camp Rising Sun, as a visitor, and also just to spend time in the town. It's been a regular part of my childhood since I was 16 years old. I've seen the town change, I've seen Oriole Mills Road change. And that's what I'm here to speak about. So, Oriole Mills Road passes, if you take a look at the next slide.
Thanks, Will. It goes further. So sorry. Let's go on to the right. Okay.
So, you'll see a yellow section of the road that indicates the paved section that runs through Camp Rising Sun as it stands now. Now, in 1930, when our founder purchased the camp, there was no paving. It was a dirt road. And in fact, our camper newspapers, which go back to 1931, found it such a strange occurrence when a car would pass through that they accidentally would put down the date and time that went past their camp. Now, over time, that's changed. Several years ago, the yellow section was paved. And now, the new plan calls for that section in red to be paved. And I want to tell you why that poses an existential threat for us at the Camp Rising Sun. You can move to the next one. Now, I sent a letter to you folks last week with some of the similar information. But I think it helps for you to see the layout and understand what's going on. Now, when we bought the camp and operated it since 1930, we built the main buildings all around the road. So, the blue area for our ball fields, the activity buildings. These are the areas where 60 young campers, 14 through 15 years old, from about 35 different countries, spend their summer. Now, we haven't operated it for the last two years, but we have plans for reopening it within the next three to four years. And we're doing the fundraising for that now. So, we'll have about 60 kids and about 20 staff members crossing the roads multiple times during the day. They go from their tents to the locker rooms, to the dining areas, to the fields. And towards the top of the screen, if you went further, you have about another 100 acres of land where we have our swimming pools and our hiking trails and everything else. So, the campers on a regular basis are crossing the roads, walking along the roads. And we're concerned about the impact of paving, the last unpaved section of that road. So, originally, you can get a sense of where the facility was laid out. The barn was taken down about 37 years ago. But we've been here since 1930, bringing campers, bringing staff. Some of our notable alumni include Pete Seeger, who I got to see perform at the site multiple times over the years. And a lot of the folks who have continued to come back and eventually even settle in this area. And if you can go to the next one. We welcome people, again, from about 35 different countries. Over the last two years, we've been operating at our Clinton Corners campus. When the road was paved, repaved, I should say, about three years ago, four years ago at this point, we noticed an immediate increase in the speed of cars going through campus. So, previously, when the road was paved, let's say in a very rough state or in a gravel state, cars could slow down to, let's say, about 15, 20, 25 miles going through camp. It's dangerous, it's not ideal, but it's something that we were able to deal with by teaching the kids to stay off the roads and posting placards, it's a 25 mile an hour zone going through the camp. And we've been able to take care of that. The concern that we have is once you pave that next section of the road, cars will have about a half mile straightaway. It'll be the longest straight section of Oriole Mills Road. It would be completely paved. And generally, people on paved rural roads are going about 45 to 50 miles an hour. If you can go to the next slide. And as you can see, as the road comes into camp, this is the area that the kids are doing silly things like slippy slides or bringing their firewood around, or just taking a walk to get to their tents in the afternoon. So, if you take what was a 25 mile an hour zone with a rough gravel surface, you pave it and effectively allow or encourage speeds of 45 to 50 miles an hour, you can imagine our concern for the kids that come to our program. Next one, please. And if you go back one.
Sorry. That's okay. Is that?
No, there should be one further.
One or the twenty?
Oh, I take it back, that must be the order. And where the areas that people come into the camp, let's say at the end of that paved section, this is what they would arrive at. It's our main assembly area, and it's our outdoor theater. So, you've got a concrete structure that cars would be coming to at high rates of speed. Or, that's on the left side. On the right-hand side, you would have the main assembly area for the kids. And a car doing 45 miles an hour or 50 miles an hour will do a lot of damage. So, you can see the difference coming into the camp from the east of this current paved section. I stopped by there today and spent about a half hour just watching cars come through. I counted 14 cars in about a half hour period of time. It was an unusually busy period, I think. And so, the cars went anywhere from, let's say, roughly estimating, let's say 20 miles an hour up through 40, 45 miles an hour coming around that curve, which is a scary thing to see, the speed. On the other side, from the west, you've got that unpaved road, much wider, much straighter, that comes right into camp. And again, if you pave that, that's a straightaway, right? More than a half mile long right into camp. Algeas are kicking in too. So, just to summarize the speed, we all know this from our personal experience, but the faster a car is going, the more powerful the impact. So, a 20 miles an hour injury is likely, but not particularly severe. Death is very unlikely. Once you get to 45 miles an hour, death is far more likely than not. Serious injury guaranteed if the child survives, in the unlikely event they survive.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's perfect. So, as I said, we are planning on reopening the camp. We've got about three years of fundraising ahead of us in order to get to that point. We have a process in place now to mothball the camp for the next couple of years. We've already taken several steps along that way. If this road is paved, the implications for us are profound. The fundraising plan calls for us to refurbish the existing buildings, and that's about a million and a half dollars. That's what we're trying to fundraise towards in order to be able to make that work. In 2007, we hired an engineering firm to come up with a comprehensive plan to move us off the road. And the bill on that one came in at about $7.5 million, between facilities, roads, sewer, water, electricity, and everything else. So, $7 million is far more than what we can effectively budget for as an organization of our size. We're a small nonprofit. We've got about 6,000 alumni around the world. We're not a Harvard or Yale or another large nonprofit that could probably afford that kind of bill. So, a million and a half is something we can work towards. And we've been working towards that now for a couple of years. But having to completely relocate the campus off of that road is just frankly a burden, most likely too far for us. Go to the next slide. And again, just to, yeah, it goes.
It's the same map, I can't remember.
Yeah, it's the same map. And just so you understand again, looking at that from the red section where the paving currently ends into camp, it's about actually .6 miles. Right into a blind turn in the middle of our camp. And once the road is paved, you can obviously imagine, in addition to higher speeds, you've got more traffic now that people, more people feel comfortable driving down it. All the research we have tells us that we ought to expect speeds of 45 or 50, even with posted signs. Even with the current 25 mile an hour signs posted, very rarely people obey those, especially coming in from the paved section on the east side of camp. And the next one. And again, if you have any questions about the layouts of the buildings, that one there, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about it. But those are our core activity centers. Everything at camp is built around that road. And you can see, red brings cars at high speeds right into the middle of our campus. And that's something that we just can't imagine exposing kids to, knowing that, you know, at 45 miles an hour, a car can come plowing through the middle of our camp.
Damian, can I ask you, I apologize for interrupting, but it seems to me, is that the driveway or the entrance way to the ball fields, all the way to the left at the bottom there with the blue? Is that where they access some of the ball field?
Well, there's no fence. It's just a completely open area. And in fact, there is a three-foot fall off. So, there's a three or four-foot fall directly from the road down to the ball fields. So, cars, in fact, coming up to that would have a three or four-foot fall off to the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, you've got a 10-foot tall retaining wall. And then going into that dark blue building, that's a concrete structure with no walls. It's just pillars supporting the pre-attentioned concrete roof.
But there are...
And there is an access road to the left of the blue section, and that takes you down to the, yeah, that takes you down to the pool into the roller fields.
Oh, is there?
Yeah, there should be one.
Sorry.
So, what we're asking the town to consider is look at the safety issues inherent in paving this section of the road. It's our understanding that you're going through a comprehensive road and planning process right now that's due to be completed in 2018. It seems to us that the paving of this one last section ought to wait until we've had a chance to really look at the safety implications, the environmental implications, and also just to take a look at what the final plan will come out for the town and for its roads going forward. Once this section is paved, it's undoable. And we've been asking, actually since the 1990s, for restrictions on paving for things like speed bumps along the way. And those have all been declined. And I'm not a person who is against infrastructure and rural development. In fact, that's what my company does. We build steel components for big infrastructure projects. And I helped start the Port Authority in the town in Ohio that our factory is located. So, I understand the importance of development, the importance of infrastructure. I also understand the importance of getting it right and taking the time to make sure you do it right, rather than rush into something that has implications that carry on for years or decades. Not the right.
But Damian, what, what plan are we engaged in that's supposed to be completed by 2018?
Our Complete Streets.
Huh?
Our Complete Streets, that's on River Valley Greenway, right? Our Complete Streets design program. Ted is already close to happening.
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with that, right?
Yeah, we went out and got a Greenway grant for it.
We have a vending Greenway grant to study roads.
We have the grant.
And who's doing that work?
Green...
Green plan? And that's the one that's mentioned as due by 2018?
Yeah, we had a conversation with Ted Finkin. He explained to me that's the projected completion of that.
That's what he's talking about?
Mm-hmm. Okay. And also, just keep in mind on that map, there are some waterways that cross underneath the road. We've got, and for the entire length, almost the entire length of what's being paved or proposed paved, we own both sides of the road. That goes the entire section of that new paved section. So, we obviously, as a landowner, have some concerns about that too. And, you know, we've been told that there may be some questions around use rules of paving roads that we just aren't exploring because we only found out about this. In fact, in all cases in the past, when the road's been paved, it was a bit of a surprise to us. We would, I think we came in in the summer of, somewhere in the early 90s, and found that section through the campus paved. It had been paved in the off-season while we weren't there. So, this is something, obviously, that's a great concern. We understand the importance of development. We're not trying to hold back development. We're just asking for some time for us to look at this and make sure we get it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Damian.
May I ask one question? Is there any plan to put signage on either end of the property that says Camp Rising Sun Children's Camp?
There's signs on both sides of it right now, clearly marked with 25 mile an hour zones with camper crossing.
But perhaps designating or enhancing the description of a camp, world-renowned children's camp, would be helpful for people who are entering and exiting that area of the camp? Because currently, there's nothing that points to that, except a sign on the left-hand side on a building that says Camp Rising Sun.
We've had some different signage over the years. And I guess we can take a look at that and see what the impact...
It might be something that will make the drivers aware that there are children there, other than campers crossing? Because I think specifically for the age of the people who are there, it might be helpful.
I'd like to point out that I live next door to the camp. And in the summer, when the campers are there, there is extensive signage that tells you...
Flashing lights.
Flashing lights, and it's different from...
But perhaps a year-round would bring the awareness that this is an area that campers are there, whenever they may be there or not there. People might get used to the fact that this is a sensitive area.
We do put more signs up on all the roads leading in when the kids are there. And right now, if you were to take a look, you've got, on, let's say, the side coming in from the west, at about 200 yards distance, you have a camper crossing sign, slow 25 mile an hour.
Right, but...
And then when you get closer, you have another series of signs. And the same thing on the other side of camp, you've got that speed issue.
And if I were not familiar with the area, I would think, oh, there's campers. But that doesn't really speak to, there are children here who are engaged in camping activities or at camp for the day. But that doesn't really speak to, there are children here who are engaged in camping activities or at camp for the day. And perhaps enhancing that would draw attention to the fact that you have to go slow.
Fair enough.
Would anyone else like to make some public comments?
Well, I've already started talking, so I'll just keep going. That is a good idea, Chris. I'm Susan Hinkle-Linder, and I've lived on Oriole Mills Road for, I just figured it out, thirty-eight years. I live across from the waterfall, and that's my garden, which I consider to be a public garden. People stop and look at it and often actually ask me if they can walk through the garden or they can fish, as they fished at young children. At any rate, I'd like to echo, you're talking about the importance of the speed on the road. And certainly, first and foremost, I think about Camp Rising Sun. I think about the six thousand young men who've had the benefit of eight weeks in the summer with a program that has changed many, many of their lives. And over the years, six degrees of separation, I've probably met a hundred young men, older men, who went to Camp Rising Sun. And actually, once, we were talking about what's the most incredible thing that ever happened to you in your life? And in front of his wife and his children, he started describing the camp he went to. And I said, I live next door. And he said, every summer, we came to sing Happy Birthday to Mr. Bros, who lived in your house. And Mr. Bros was Freddie Jonas's best friend. And Mr. Bros, I think, bought my house for Freddie Jonas and his family to be there next door to him. This camp is so important, and young men from Red Hook and Rhinebeck have come to this camp over the years for no, no cost. It's part of the community. And I, I want the camp to remain there, please, please. And I also want the other service points of interest on that road to remain safe for the children. There are ball fields. They're not on Oriole Mills Road. They're on what's called Stone Church Road, which is in Rhinebeck. Those are Rhinebeck and Red Hook children playing on those ball fields. And the parking is right along the road. And the audience for the ball games is right along the road, and their children and their dogs. And the traffic needs to travel slowly there. And one of the places that guarantees that that traffic will slow down is the dirt road. That beautiful, beautiful dirt road. And people slow down, and they look at the owls that fly in front of their cars, and they look at the wetlands, and they look at that stream that runs through and goes into the Salt Hill. This place Freddie Jonas recognized as what I call sacred land. And that's why he chose to put his money and his vision there to last. He never, ever thought it would end. And then, if you keep on going, there's a dog park. Well, actually, a dog park is before the ball fields. And there's the recycling center. And there are the farms along the road. And there's the Rhine, there's the area drum. Again, it's the Rhinebeck area drum, but it's good for all of us. This is a place we drive through slowly, or should. And then at my end of the road, there are those historic curves. And they make the road even more beautiful, but they're dangerous. They're dangerous. And that dirt road helps the safety of every person who drives on the road and the many, many people who walk their dogs on the road, who ride their bikes on the road, and who walk their children down the road. And Ms. Olivia was just born on Easter Sunday, and she's gonna be walking down that road just the same way her mother walked down that road to my house for many, many, many years. So the circle keeps going around, and I beg you to think of this road as a service road. For, what, two hundred and seventy years, it's been a service road. And to keep this part of it unpaved for beauty, for Camp Rising Sun, and for safety for everybody. So thank you. Oh, you know what? There's one more important thing I have to say. Ms. Burke, you take care of our roads. And I'm especially thankful in the wintertime, because that road, with all its curves, is always cleared with all of the ice because of the runoff, is always sanded. So I thank the road crew led by Teresa Burke.
Thank you, Susan. We're very proud of our highway department. We appreciate that you're mentioning that and a lot of the correspondence that we do to receive on this topic. It does, in fact, mention that. I do wanna correct you on one minor thing. The Rhinebeck aerodrome is in the town of Red Hook. We won't let them forget that.
You're right, you're right.
So is the dog park.
Right. Oh, down yass road, it changes, yes.
Would you like to make some comments? Sure.
Hi, I'm sorry about my attire, but I'm a gardener and I came right from work.
You know what? This is Red Hook. We don't care about people's attire.
So my name is Randy Sakheim, and I actually own a home in Clinton. But in the summertime, I come to two-eleven Oriole Mills Road, the Harvey Kohn's house, because I rent out my house. So for the last four years, I've been coming and residing at Harvey's house. So I'm here both for myself and as his proxy. He is unable to be here tonight, so I'm gonna read this short statement from Harvey. Statement from Harvey Kohn, owner of two-eleven Oriole Mills Road regarding the paving of Oriole Mills Road. I regret that I'm unable to attend tonight's board meeting due to a hearing in Woodstock that I need to attend in my capacity as an architect. I want to express my strong opposition to the paving project that is being planned. I have lived on Oriole Mills Road for most of my life, about fifty years, having grown up there, attended Red Hook Central School, and inheriting the property from my father about seven years ago. One of the charms of that location is its rural character. I was upset when the stretch of Oriole Mills Road in front of our driveway slash bridge was paved several decades ago. The unpaved portion through Camp Rising Sun property is now the only thing that keeps this road from becoming a major thoroughfare and shortcut from Route three oh eight to either Red Hook Village or Rhinebeck Shopping Strip. My neighbors and I had a taste of what could happen when Route one ninety-nine was closed for the bridge construction last summer. A large volume of traffic ignored local traffic-only signs and used our road as a shortcut. Automobiles traveling at high speeds, large trucks, and accidents continue to be a not uncommon occurrence. My fear is that paving this road will exacerbate the problem. I also object to unnecessarily paving roads on environmental grounds after the previous paving project increased water runoff adversely affected my bridge. Excuse me. I believe the paving project is unnecessary because my immediate neighbors and I have good access east to Route three oh eight and one ninety-nine to get to the villages. And residents who live west of Camp Rising Sun have easy access in the other direction. There is no need for paving to connect these two stretches of road. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter, Harvey Kohn. And for myself, having been there from May to October the last four years, I move in with my cats. One of them got killed between Harvey's house and Susan and Chris's house because she went to visit the boys regularly at the camp. And she would, she's not used to roads because I live down a dead end, and she got killed right around the curve. People on paved roads go too fast. And that unpaved road, I believe, really slows people down. We can put all kinds of signs. But many of the people who are coming through are people coming from the Taconic. They're following GPS. They're taking shortcuts. And there's nothing like one's own self-interest in not wanting to wreck one's car by not driving too fast on the dirt road. So I am also, I realize I'm just a renter, but I'm quite an advocate of leaving that stretch of the road. I live off, my house is off of Slate Quarry Road, which is pretty curvy. I know lots of it has been fixed, but it's pretty curvy, and it's a dangerous road. And recently, they put up all kinds of new signs, forty-five miles an hour signs, flashing lights, slow down curves. It's, there are accidents on this road, that road, all the time. I realize it's much more of a thoroughfare, but we don't, it would be wonderful not to make Oriole Mills Road one of those dangerous thoroughfares.
Thank you. And I'd like to point out, you're from Town of Clinton, you said?
Yes.
Town of Clinton has a lot of dirt, unpaved roads. I know many folks who live there. In fact, I noticed one of the EPA documents that was given to us by one of our engineers has a statistic that actually ninety percent of the roads in America are unpaved, which I found to be startling. Anyway, if that's important. Brian?
I'm Brian Williams. I share road furniture with the camp here. I have to say that I was pretty indifferent coming here, but I'm absolutely glad that I see the camp here. Saying or pledging to keep the camp open. As long as the camp is open, I'd like to see the road unpaved. The way the camp is explained to me, and I've, I take a lot of pride in telling everybody at the camp that I spend more time at the camp than them because I've been hunting it for years, with the permission of the board for many years, and I mow the camp fields. I don't know whether it's just lore, but Freddie Jonas started the camp with the hope of bringing kids from different nations together. If, and I think, and it's not correct if I'm wrong, so that they could, what might be enemy nations, maybe affluent kids from those enemy nations, might meet one another there and realize that, hey, they're people too, and might actually change the world. And, you know, the romantic side of me would like to think that that's happened. What else in Red Hook has done that, or has any chance of doing that in the future, of changing the world? The camp does have that ability to change the world, I mean, if they stay open. From what I've heard, for at least fifteen years, they've had a problem with insurance keeping that camp open. Because the camp is right, everything about the camp is centered on the road. If it's paved, if the traffic increases, I can't help but think, aside from wanting to keep the camp there, they may be forced to close the camp because they can't afford the insurance there. And I was indifferent because I feel for Teresa. I feel for the road crews because I know them, and I know that road, the water that runs across that road. I'm sure they have to keep equipment for the sole purpose of maintaining that little stretch of road. I understand it's a balance. If the camp wasn't here tonight, I was pretty much just gonna observe. But as long as the camp is there, you know, pledging to stay open and wants to stay open, I think they should. And I do know, I live and I want, I work out in my farm, if you wanna call it that, all the time. I've watched the traffic, probably about six years ago, I think Google decided to put us on Google Maps, and traffic went up in one year probably quadrupled on that road. And that's probably the consternation of the highway department because all of that beats the road down. I can't tell you how many cars I've seen go down, cruising down, you know, they're the weekend. They go down that way, a few minutes later, they come back up. Why? Because they've run into the derbers. I'm gonna guess, when I was a kid, I used to wax my car all the time. Who drives faster than kids, honestly? We all did do or whatnot. One of the things that keeps those kids off that road is the fact that their nice, clean car is going to get dirty, dusty, and whatnot. That type is going to be driving there. I think also, the road right now, maybe because, and maybe this would work the other way, I don't know, it's a dumping ground. Steve over there is the one that sort of picks up all the trash on the road and puts it to the side. People already dump on it. If more cars use it, it's so rural that more people will start to dump there. The other thing is, as far as the danger goes, where Susan lives, the curves. I hate to think somebody's flying down that road. The increased traffic, those dangerous turns, something's gonna happen. She parks on the road. I mean, she's got nowhere to go. If there's increased unfamiliar traffic on the road, she's gonna have a problem. So I just see, normally with all these things, I wanna stay neighborly. You know, if I don't really feel one way or the other, I sort of want what my neighbors want. I see all my neighbors in here saying they don't want it. And I, I think you might have been wrong. We share just about the same amount of road furniture on that portion. I think if we had a choice, and I don't know that we do, I don't know who makes this decision, whether it's you up there or whether Teresa makes it. I sort of feel for her, you know what I mean? Like, I really do. They go down there, I see them, I hear them working all the time on that road. It's got to be a pain. It's almost like, okay, if the feeling of the board was, yeah, let's keep it open, well, let's give Teresa another fifty thousand dollars a year in budget to keep that road open because it's draining their resources. I get both sides. But this is an institution. The camp is an institution. I don't think anybody in the camp realizes how much interest I have in just, I walk, I've written, I'm sure he's read something. I walk out into those fields and nothing's changed. If the camp goes, everything will change. Those things that haven't changed over all these years, everything can change in the world. Gas prices could be up there, could be work going on, you go out in those fields and they're just like they were years ago. If they're gone, the place is gonna be subdivided out. I mean, to what extent? I can tell you firsthand, it's impossible to really build in this town. People fight you, but things will change. And more importantly, I think the man that started the camp had a vision. I forever always want this boys' camp here, and I want this mission, and I left a pile of money in that chunk of land. I hate to see that go. I can't think of other institutions in this town that are so, no, kids don't even pay to go there. I mean, I just gotta think of that. So as long as the camp is there, Teresa can sway me the next year when the camp is gone. But until then, that's my piece.
Just to follow up on one thing you said, just to give you an idea, this year we're bringing Leema Gabouy, the Nobel Prize winner from Liberia. She'll be visiting camp and spending time with our kids July tenth. And we are proud of the sorts of people that we can bring into the area to participate in the program and to experience a part of New York that, quite frankly, most people never get out of New York City when they're visiting. So when we can bring people up here to show them another part of New York, it's something we're very proud of.
Very good. Thank you very much, Brian. Would somebody else like to make some comments? Sue, would you like to go first? Sure.
When I get there.
When you get there. We'll patiently wait for you.
And I'm probably too short. Anyway, I would like to speak for the Conservation Advisory Council and with which I'm a member, and the Salt Hill Watershed Community Group, which has been working to improve our streams. And actually, they've been looking at culvert processes to see if we can open the streams and make them more what they used to be. And there were some questions that I think environmentally we would like to have the time taken to go through. For, for instance, does it use more salt on asphalt? Is there more runoff on asphalt than there is on gravel? More faster runoff, which is going to erode? The culverts do need to be upgraded, but it would be, if it can be done in a manner to help the creek stay olden. I think it's a quality of life issue, as has been said, because this community is based on trying to put activity where there are... on trying to put activity where there are services for it. So we would really like some time, just if you're able to go through, not everybody that is on the committee could be here, and we just had heard about it. So they haven't really, there are some other people who have worked on a lot of these situations that have other questions they would like to ask. I can't speak for them until we've had the opportunity, but we hope that that opportunity will be granted.
Do you know about Ted Fink's study with the...
I'm sorry?
Did you know about Ted Fink's study on our roads?
Yes, I've read his letters.
Have the CAC contact him, see whether you can coordinate something with him.
I think one member was actually gonna talk to Michelle first, but it's a matter of...
Either one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Would somebody else like to make some comment?
Hello, my name is Arnold Niklis. I am a resident of Oriole Mills, just been there, going on two years, this September. I was not thinking about coming tonight. My neighbors down the street had talked about this. We wrote a letter already, and I was thinking about, well, today actually is my son, Evan James', birthday. Today, so we're there celebrating with him. And I'm having a party this Saturday, and today was the only day to mow my lawn, and I'm rolling the dice here. I was out trying to finish that up, but as I was there mowing, you know, I thought about the, sort of the, what's going on presently in government and civic engagement and stuff like that. And I thought, you know, as a resident there of that road, of being personally affected, you know, I'm there, I should speak up, I should come. You know, this definitely affect, will affect myself and my three kids. I have a four-year-old, a thirteen-year-old, a twelve-year-old. Moving to that area, one of the draws was that camp. You know, we went looking at the house, and nobody saw the camp, and we, you know, we definitely loved it. And I had personally, had worked at camps for ten years, in various camps. And myself and my wife were both nurses. And we thought, hey, maybe we'll go volunteer at the camp, something like that at one point in time. So I am elated to hear that a possible open up, you know, down the road. You know, so coming here and hearing everybody speak, my mind's going, I'm just thinking of basically a cost-benefit analysis here of this road. You know, the cost of maintaining it, you know, and as my neighbor said, you know, definitely thank you very much for keeping that road safe, you know, in the wintertime. I live basically on either side of me. There are blind spots, you know, to the left, to the right. You know, I live at a part where there's two big curves, and you won't see my house or see me until you're on top of me. So, you know, I definitely know the importance of keeping the road safe and keeping it salted and well, definitely in the meantime. So I really appreciate that, and my kids appreciate that. But my other experience living in this area is living off of just Buds Corns Road over there. I live pretty much right close to the curve there. And I can't tell you how many times, you know, I heard accidents, you know, ambulance is running to that area, that even though there are signs up, even though you can, there's a nice, you know, nice wide curve there, there's constantly always accidents in that area there. And I think, well, whatever we can do to help prevent something like that from happening or continuing on our, in our area, that would be great. You know, there are bends and curves, it's a beautiful road to walk on. But I know that, I know that gravel road will definitely keep us a lot safer than having it paved, because even, no matter what signs are there, an individual will, you know, just keep going. You know, because it's a nice paved road, the car is moving smoothly. And it's a greater risk, because as you said, that straightaway leaves right into a curve and then going down. So there's a really increased risk of harming yourself there. But I think of, once again, about the cost-benefit analysis in that, for me, I work many times late at night, and, you know, many times I drift off to the side, and those, you know, hearing those, the marks on the road there, you know, gets me up, wakes me up. And you can definitely see that somebody riding on that road, just that gravel area there, would definitely help. So I just think of any, anything we can do, any benefit that we can keep to prevent any, any negative thing, any kid from getting harmed. You know, that's what I think about. I think about not, not property, I think about, you know, what if one day a kid gets, you know, harmed on that road? You know, that's what, you know, as a nurse, you know, as a father of three kids, I think about, that's a thing. You know, what, so I don't mind paying a little bit more in taxes, you know, to help maintain that road, if I know that possibly keeping that gravel can just increase my chances of adding to the safety of that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Evan. Would anyone else like to make some comments?
Just parenthetically, I wanted to add that there is a visually impaired woman who walks her dog down the road several times a day, and...
Linay Bebo.
I'm sorry?
Her name is Linay Bebo.
Correct, Linay.
Yeah.
And so those of us that live in the area know we have to stay slow, but I see her probably at least once a day.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephen Bang, and I live in Mylan right now, but I lived for almost four years at Camp Rising Sun as their caretaker. I lived exactly at the junction of the paved and the unpaved sections for four years, year round. And I'd like to speak for a lot of people who aren't here, the people who enjoy that very special, increasingly unusual, canopied dirt road, very rural, so that the bikers, the cross-country skiers in the winter, the hikers, the bird watchers, all the people walking dogs, there was a lot of people, I know I was there, who weren't here tonight, but who care about that section of road. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. And you're one of the many letters that we have in our folders, your correspondence. Sure, you wanna duke it out? Would you, I think you had your hand up a few minutes ago. Okay, and then, and then we'll get, and then we'll get, get to you. Okay.
All right, I'll be, okay. Hi, I have a handout. Should I give it, or?
Absolutely, sure.
It's the same thing that I sent you, the email from J.C. Calderon.
Hi, J.C. I don't know that I've, I've read this, but we'll certainly take a look at it, you know, between now and the next meetings.
So...
You sent this individually this afternoon?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't send it sooner. Yeah, so that's all been emailed to you, and, and I actually have a copy from Miss Burke. Thank you. So I am J.C. Calderon. I'm a licensed architect, licensed in New York State for twenty years, in New Jersey for about twelve years. I'm an alumnus of the camp, the camp thirty-seven years ago, volunteered for most of that time for the camp, behalf of the camp. I was the chair of the Buildings and Grounds Committee after decades of volunteering on it for about two years, two and a half years, in two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen. Stephen Bang was a counselor of mine as a camper. And anyway, there, we, I'm here to speak on behalf of an alumni organization that supports Camp Rising Sun. And so we are a nonprofit entity called Alumni and Friends Camp Rising Sun Incorporated, tax exempt, and five oh one, N C three, tax exempt, as well as New York State Registered with the Charities Bureau. We are, so my letter, first of all, I just wanna say before I forget, I wanna publicly thank Ms. Burke as well, for a couple of years ago, when I was trying to understand, you know, what the road, the implications of the road at the camp could be for the camp's future, I reached out, because I wanted to find out, you know, what in fact was the history, to what extent could speed bumps be done. She gave me all the history of the interaction between the foundation and her office, and she made it very clear what the history was, you know, and why speed bumps may be a problem, you know, for that particular road, which is not a private road, it's a public road. But nevertheless, it was, it was a good exchange to understand, you know, the responsibilities of her department, as well as the camp's needs. But my letter, which, again, I hope you read, basically describes our concern, again, as was said many times here, about the rural character, but also about the safety of the campers in particular, and about the environmental impact that the materials could have, since it is, since the materials could have an impact on the, on the streams and the wetlands area. So there's a map that was done years ago by the D E C that shows, and you could see it in the documents I sent you, but it's basically, it shows the location of the, what was referred to as the intermittent stream crossing the road and heading towards the wetlands on the western part of the property, you could sort of see here, right? And that stream actually continues all the way to the Salt Hill Road, so it intersects with the Salt Hill in the northern part. As is described in the report here, there was a sort of forest stewardship plan written up for the purposes of, you know, sort of making a plan for how to use the lands. And in the, in the report, which I highlighted, you know, in the email, it makes it clear that, you know, on the second to last page, the properties, western and southwestern forests, drain via small, several small ephemeral channels, and by a small intermittent stream into the state-regulated wetland R C seven, a large wooden swamp. And then it says, "The aforementioned stream originates about a half mile south of Oriole Mills Road and flows north to join the Salt Hill at the north end of the Camp Rising Sun property." So again, you know, we're just saying, we'd like more conclusive study for this particular project proposal. We think, we support the idea, you know, of additional review. We think that that's, you know, the state environmental quality review. We think, we realize that there's a difference of opinion on that, but we would advocate that, again, to help, you know, everyone come to a consensus on what is really the right thing to do, given all the parameters or all the points made up. But, you know, again, just to speak quickly about the legacy of the camp, this is, again, you know, over eighty years, it was over eighty years in existence, had an international impact. People from many countries went on to do very, you know, important things, and a lot of the foreign campers, it was really their first time or only time in the U.S. And so they were really introduced to Red Hook. So Red Hook really, in their minds, in many people's minds, is, you know, associated directly with their experience at the camp. And the alumni at the organization are very, is a long list of impressive alumni. Most famous of them, like was mentioned before, Pete Seeger. Pete Seeger's daughter, Tina Seeger, is actually on our advisory board. She's supporting our efforts as an organization. And actually, you can see the other people that are supporting our organization on the letterhead. So we have a widespread support as, you know, my organization, that seeks to reopen the Red Hook camp. The other thing I would like to implore to the planning board, to the town board, is that it's important to, you know, keep in mind that the camp is closed. The camp was closed. There was a decision to keep, to close the camp a few years ago. And make no mistake, that there are people who want to keep the camp closed, right? So all I'm saying is, the intersection of the road has been used and been discussed as a reason why the camp shouldn't remain in Red Hook. And when you make a decision to pave that road, that will be falling straight into the hands of the persons who want to keep the camp closed. So make no mistake, that that will be used as an argument to keep the camp closed, because as much as there are people who want to reopen the camp, there are very, there's a very clear number of advocates who want to keep the camp closed, and want to not open the camp. So I would implore upon you to reconsider, not just the implications for the town, but the implications for the long-term viability, and assure, you know, and guarantee that the camp could actually reopen. Closing, you know, improve, you know, making that road more dangerous for kids will fall right into the argument of the people who have always said that the road is too dangerous for the, for the, for the camp. And so faster, you know, a road that allows for faster traffic will just strengthen that argument on behalf of the people who want to, have no intention of reopening the camp.
Very good. Thank you very much. Yes?
Hi, my name is Deborah Barrow, and I live in the town of Rhinebeck. I own two parcels on Old Rock City Road, one of which, the back of, is in the town of Red Hook. Can I get a tax bill that says Oriole Mill Road Rear? That's the address of the tax bill. I've lived in my house, twenty-one Old Rock City Road, since nineteen eighty-three. I sent you an email. My driveway is the old continuation of Oriole Mill Road. On old maps, Oriole Mill Road continued down my driveway, then around some barns that are now gone, made a right-hand turn and went out to what was, what is now three oh eight. And it is almost directly across from the end of Oriole Mill Road. And so any increase in traffic always results in people coming down my driveway, thinking that they're still on Oriole Mill Road. I have almost lost the dog once. I used to have a small child, I now have a small grandchild, and it's an issue for me. When the bridge was out on one ninety-nine, and everybody decided to go down Old Rock City Road, and then Oriole Mill Road, they were a-coming last summer down my driveway. It's a very dangerous situation. Not only do I feel that there's an issue with the danger on Oriole Mill Road by paving it in the area in question, the area that's paved is incredibly dangerous, and I feel needs additional signage and a lower speed limit. I take that road once a week, twice a week. I would take it more if it weren't so dangerous, but I would say, once a month, I'm in a situation where I have to go, you know, there's no shoulder, per se, this is more like a little ditch, to move all the way over to the right to avoid oncoming trucks and cars going at a high rate of speed on the paved area in between the camp and Old Rock City Road. So I know how fast they're already going in the zigzag area between Susan's house and Harvey's house and your house. It is, it is an absolute speedway, as it is, and it's very narrow, and it's serpentine. I believe that if that paved road, the unpaved road is paved, they're gonna have a head of speed that will increase the speed that they're taking. In addition, you know, GPS has found that as the fastest route from the Taconic to the Rhine Cliff Kingston Bridge, on sometimes, if you go on W A Z E, sometimes on Google Maps, it'll even come up as an alternative way to get to. And as a matter of fact, people who visit me, sometimes are told to come, you know, down Old Rock City Road, and then out, to leave out the Oriole Mill Road. If that's paved, certainly on something like W A Z E, which takes into account paved versus unpaved, that's gonna become more of a high-frequency road. So I know I'm a resident of Rhinebeck, I have a little parcel there in the town of Rhine, of Red Hook, and I'm really definitely very concerned about the implications of paving that part of the road.
Thank you, Deborah. I don't think you should be ashamed of being a resident of town of Rhinebeck.
I should know whether I was standing or was down.
The public is the public, and obviously, people who have access to our public roads, you know, come from near and far. And we do a lot of collaborative work, I might say, especially recently with the town of Rhinebeck. I think somebody referenced the dog park that we share. I think somebody referenced the dog park that we share and which I think, you know, straddles the border.
Quick question.
Sure.
How many people here saw the presentation on Panda of the intent of paving the road, what kind of road surface we were going to use? Does anybody know about the gravel overlay instead of the asphalt as the finish course? You may want to look at the last town board meeting. I did a presentation that laid out clearly from end to end what my plan was for Oriole Mills Road, including the dirt section. I think that it may give you a little deeper understanding of what I'm trying to do with the road as well as calm the traffic. So I would like you to take the time to watch that, either on YouTube or on Panda 23, to be fully informed about how I intend to approach this.
I'm going to tell Harvey about this. Tell me again what he looks for.
You can go on YouTube, Town of Red Hook, Town Board Meeting, the last, last month's town board meeting. I did a presentation that laid out what the plan was, what the traffic calming features, the gravel overlay. Or you can go on Panda 23, that's our local access network, and you can see that currently. And it's a presentation that will tell you what the plan is and what it is not. So I would appreciate it if everybody could look at that and be a little more informed about what we're trying to do here. I understand the concerns. The board is listening, I'm listening. But I feel that it's only fair that you be informed as to what my plan is as well.
Thank you, Teresa. And yes, there was a handout at last month's meeting. I know some of you have already requested that handout and received that handout. But yes, there was a visual associated with it. Chris?
I'm Christopher Lindner, resident at Oriole Mills, the Waterfalls with Susan. And I also work in right at Red Hook at Bard College, where I teach historical archaeology. And that's what I'd like to speak to, is the historic character of this road. It hasn't been mentioned except by Brian saying that you can go down in those fields and it's like it was a couple centuries ago. And Susan saying that the road has been there for 270 years, which is about right, approximately. We don't know for sure. The people who settled in Rhinebeck, in Red Hook was at the time, settled along the stretch by Route 9. That was where the best soil was, not by the river, tobacco ways. And when they went to grind their wheat and corn, they took Oriole Mills Road to the Waterfalls, where the living states built a mill around 1760, 1750 perhaps. So that road has been like this for that long, over 250 years. Susan and I were here at the last meeting. We heard Teresa's presentation. And we think that that road, which is similar to what's in Rhinebeck, as I gather, on Pell's Road, will look substantially different than it looks now. But I wanted to emphasize what Susan said about this stretch of road being so special. And part of it is the historic character. You come down from Brian's Land and heading east on the road, you come down where the sheep are grazing most of the time. Look like your sisters. And you go over a hump and all of a sudden, you're in the 1700s. There are stone walls along the road. They're a little fallen down, but if you look closer, you can see them. You slow down and you feel Red Hook's history in a way that you don't feel it anywhere else in the town. There are other historic places, but not like this, not like a gravel road through a forest. Steve said it well, that it's a canopy forest, so the trees enclose you. And the sight of, on either side, the camp is, you don't see it until you're right on it. Because there are curves on either end of that stretch of road that you had up there in the first slide that Damian presented, shows it well. So the outside world is closed off and you're able to appreciate the historic nature of Red Hook in a road through a forest. And what I would think is that not only should we add more signs at camp to protect the campers, but we maybe should put signs as you enter and leave that section of that road that emphasize the historic character of Red Hook and what it was like over 250 years ago when you, when everybody was a farmer, just about, growing wheat and corn and taking it to Oriole Mills to be ground or cutting trees and taking them there to be sawed or taking your sheep wool to be turned into, through the furling mill that was there, to be turned into cloth. So there is a historic character here that we should, we should really, character of the community that we should value very, very highly. And that road does it for, even if we don't recognize it now, I think we should try to recognize it more, try to bring it up more. And, you know, maybe fix up the stone walls a little bit. I think there's also probably, as an archaeologist, I can say there's probably a ruined farm on the camp property that maybe we'll do a project sometime to bring that out, to show what farming was like, what's associated with it from 200-some years ago. So for all those reasons, I think we have something very special that we should protect. It needs, if nothing else, it needs a great deal further study, environmentally, safety aspects, but also historic aspects. And personally, I think it should be kept, not only kept the way it is, but actually brought out more how special this is. And to that end, it's been suggested that Teresa have an increase in her budget for taking care of that road, which she does a great job of. I agree with everyone who said that. It's really managed well. And it's not over-managed, it's managed just right. Once in a while, it gets a little bumpy, but that's to be expected. And we're glad for it. So thank you, board, for considering this carefully. Thank you, Teresa, and everybody else for supporting us.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
For the people that aren't familiar, and there's probably most are here, but they're further away from me right now than the camp buildings are from the road. So my feeling is, what I really care about is the camp. People do fly down my road, the more cars go down the road, the more people will fly down that road, just statistically. But we've all seen around here animal crossing signs, you know, chickens crossing, cows crossing, horse crossing, whatever it may be. I don't think the chickens much care about the sign down the road. When you consider the fact that the kids, the buildings that the kids are coming from are two-thirds of the distance that I am away from you, there could be all the signs in the world, kids don't care about the signs. I've gone down that road a lot. I used to commute to the city daily down that road. And, you know, when camp is in session, no matter what the counselors tell them, sometimes it's like chickens in the road. You come around the corner and they're standing in the road because the activities are happening right there. There's no way to, there's nothing that can change that unless the camp somehow comes up with a budget to move the buildings, which I don't think the town is going to give them a grant to do. I think it's next to an impossible situation with a paved situation. It's just a matter of time before somebody gets hurt there. Because I've seen it and I know the road. People don't know the road. Kids are just being kids. The odds of something happening are greatly, just great. The building, the proximity is right there.
The more I hear people talk, the more I feel as though that ruin should not be there. The camp should not have been built with the road going through the middle of it in the first place. But now it looks like the land, from the map I have here, I can see that the, that the road goes through the middle of it. But there's also probably a way to move the road off to the, to the southern edge of the camp and the camp property so that the, it will...
I'm going to say physically, if we, you use one year's town budget to do that and you'd have to move Susan Ankle out of her house, so...
If you, if you, it's a, it's an unresolvable problem with the, with the camp. And that's what's been done in other places. I realize the cost. The cost can, could be immense. But, you know, you're dealing with lives, you're dealing with the lives of kids. And as you pointed out, the kids play in the road and they're teenagers. But the resolution, the, we're talking around the issue here. And the issue, the issue should be that the camp should be, should be restructured in a way so that it isn't on both sides of the road, or the road moved, or a little bit of both. There's, there are, there are ways to do it. It's not cheap. But you're, you're putting a lot of money into this camp, you're saying.
We're in the process of raising the money to be able to do it. We have to get our annual giving up so we can get back to running two camps. And then there'll be a capital campaign to...
And no matter how you face it, you're handicapped by the fact that there's a road going through the middle of the camp, whether, whether it's dirt or whatever, from my point of view. And I've had, I have kids and grandchildren, I would have the same. And in the last few weeks, I've driven over there several times. And I can, it's clear what it would be like with the, with the camp in operation. But I, you know, the issue isn't how the road's paved. The issue is where the road is.
Okay.
And we don't have the, we can't, we can't, as a town, with the taxpayers we have, go to the expense of moving it ourselves. But, I mean, that maybe should be one of your, one of your fundraisers.
Okay. Would anybody else like to make some public comments? Okay, I'm hearing none. We, it's a segue into the first item on the agenda, which is the agreement to expend highway monies on Oriole Mills Road. And I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's very important that we communicate with our residents and that the communication is not perpontory. It's not just a step that we take so that it looks like we are in touch with our residents, but it's actually about listening. We've had a lot of correspondence on this issue. We've had a lot of speaking on the issue. And I wasn't surprised about the correspondence because I knew that this is around the corner from Pell's Road and I had recall what happened at Pell's Road many years ago, or at least a decade or so ago, and how the residents in that general vicinity felt about their roads. So the correspondence wasn't that surprising. What did surprise me, however, though, is that I had my office mailed to the area, not just the few people on the road in the camp, but to the area, to several roads around there, because I wanted to get the other side. I wanted to get the users of the road, how they felt about the road and whether or not the road should change in its characteristics. And what surprised me is I didn't have one correspondence from anyone. That said, you know, I live around the block from that road. It's dirty, it's messy, sometimes it's squishy. I feel unsafe on it. I've gotten this letter from you and the highway superintendent and I think it's a good idea, or I think it's something you should explore, paving the road. Not one, not one comment from anybody. All of the emails that my office has received, and I think I've shared them with the board, all of them, talk about all these issues, which I think you're very articulate in describing what the potential impacts may be. But frankly, we don't have enough information to really concur with what you're saying. I have a lot of experience with Red Hook's roads because people come into my office about one issue far and above any other issue in this town. And that is their anxiety associated with drivers and the safety of their road, far and above any other issue. And so what I would say is that we need a lot more time to really study what's critical in this issue. And I, I was really touched by Brian's remarks because it's really what Red Hook is about. We have unique assets. We have unique qualities. And if we don't recognize them and we don't carefully address situations which may change those unique characteristics, then it's hard to get them back. We've seen other municipalities not too far from here where they weren't careful about what they let happen. And so they're struggling to get another identity, to fix problems that have occurred without taking the proper time, the proper care, and frankly, the proper analysis. Because whether it's the cost of having a dirt road versus a paved road, I've got nothing in front of me that compares to what we've been spending, what we're anticipating to spend if it were to be paved. If it comes to the issue of safety, I've got nothing in front of me except for actually some stuff that one of our engineers sent, talking about when you should consider paving a road. I mean, I think her suggestion was, does it even have enough traffic that it really merits spending taxpayer money, really scarce taxpayer resources on a section of road?
Dana asks the question, Robert, not in front of... Are we talking about simply the dirt section?
I, I am at this moment.
Just the dirt section?
I am at this moment.
Okay, so everyone is here for the dirt section? Not, not the paving of the already paved surface?
Teresa, I can't speak to what everybody is here for. I'm just trying to...
Clarify for my own program. Because if there is to be any kind of a compromise, say, the asphalt section of Oriole Mills really needs resurfacing, but the push is to keep the dirt section dirt, okay? Would that change the nature of this project in people's eyes? Would that satisfy the preservation of the history, the, the look of the road, the safety in people's minds? Because it's the drivers that affect the safety and not the road. Would, would that make this a different story?
Teresa, are you asking if you just want to repave the sections that are paved? Is that okay with you?
Well, absolutely. That's what I'm asking because I keep hearing about the repaving of Oriole Mills Road as this, you know, gigantic project. But we're, I'm feeling that you're, you're objecting to the dirt section. And, and the scope of my project goes from end to end.
From our point of view, the dirt road is the part that runs right through the middle and gives people that chance to build up a head of steam coming into our camp. So that's what we're most concerned about before the other neighbors, they may have their own different opinions on that.
Because our, our intent is not just to repave the dirt section. It's to repave the section that's falling apart, the asphalt. So, you know, I can take that into consideration. Can you take that into consideration? Would there be an option to repave the paved area and just not pave that dirt section that's so near and dear to your hearts? The reason why I want to pave the dirt section, you'll find in my presentation. For a couple of weeks in the summertime, there are campers there, or eight weeks, two months, three months. We deal with the road year round, the mud, the ice. You know, we've, we've done our seeker to the point where we're almost ready to review it to address all the environmental concerns. We're waiting for that answer to come back. But we're not adverse to hearing what you have to say. But I'd also like to know that, is it something that's just that little piece?
I, I, I would like for the Oriole Mill Road, I came up one weekend and it was paved in front of my house and up, up to the buildings in front of the camp, and I cried. I, I actually, I, I, I felt betrayed almost.
How long ago was that?
Because that was a long time ago. I've lived there for 38 years. But I, but I, I just lived on a dirt road. And then it wasn't a dirt road. I'd like the road to be depaved, if that was possible.
Unfortunately, we don't have a network of...
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying that you asked what I'd like, or I'm just speaking for myself. I'd like for the, for the whole road to not be paved because that would make the whole road safer. It's, and I'm not expecting that the road is going to be depaved. Now, I don't know when Oriole Mills was last paved. It doesn't seem to me it was so long ago. I would think after Hurricane.
Yeah, there was one section that was recently paved, but the other section is starting to show a lot of age. And it was quite some time ago.
In front of my house, from the camp down to Kathy Grandy's house. If it was 2014, that's the date on it, that's when that part of the road was paved. So from.
That was after Hurricane Irene.
Right, so from the dirt road up to Yance Road must be, and that's a short, short section of road.
Point four miles.
Point four miles? Oh, well, okay, that's a short section of road. As a taxpayer, I would, I mean, even if I didn't live on the road, I'd look at that and say, you know, this doesn't need paving except for a very short portion of it because it was just paved in 2014.
That is part of the full project, okay? We would top that paved portion with a gravel surface to calm the traffic. But there is the other section of asphalt that is falling apart. And it's my job as Highway Superintendent to maintain the roads. It's my obligation to the taxpayers and the residents of the entire town of Red Hook. I can't just let the road fall apart. If we have a section that's dirt already and everyone feels strongly about keeping that section dirt, you know, that I understand. But I would not understand stopping the entire project just because of that dirt section. Because the rest of it is a resurfacing.
Can I say something? For me, and maybe I own the stretch, basically, pay the taxes centerline. With the area you're concerned about, I'm okay with what Teresa, I mean, if we want to talk about being neighborly, I could be neighborly to Teresa also, I'm gonna say she's got a job to do. And if it's already paved, I certainly don't want to be driving on those sections in three years because nobody wants her to touch the road and, you know, I'm bending the wheels in my car. So if that's what she wants to do, I personally, I say, you know what?
I leave it up to the town.
It is, we're not gonna unpave the roofs.
But that is an alternative.
Here's what I will suggest. It relates to another project we were looking at last year. We paved only a portion of Echo Valley Road because some of the residents had asked for an opportunity to discuss the possibility. When it was built, it was built like a boulevard, twenty-six feet wide unnecessarily wide. Our town highway specs were really calling for non-neighborhood development style roads. And so Teresa kindly agreed to wait until we had this complete streets design so we could, you know, take a look at the road and all the various options that would be available to, for that road and for the road. And we discussed meeting with the neighborhood and working collaboratively to try and figure out the best solution going forward. So what I was going to propose, and I've discussed it with, you know, some of my town board members, is that we wait on this project. But if there's a portion of it that you believe, Teresa, that cannot wait because it's deteriorating, certainly I think I would entertain that discussion. I will say however, because there's nothing in front of me and I don't know what we're referencing, I'm very concerned about what you see on your screen. So I hope that doesn't include repaving and additional what you see on the screen. Because that's exactly where all the kids will be going back and forth. And so if we're talking about engineering, especially with the curb, I'm very familiar with paved curbs. I'm very familiar with straightaways into paved curves. I own property on Feller Newmark Road and there has not been accidents on any other town road like there has on Feller Newmark. In fact, last month, there was a car upside now, one of the first times I've seen that happen. So, you know, if you would like to bring to the board a revision.
Well, the point is, on those dangerous curves, they're straight asphalt now. My plan was to put an oil and stone overlay that increases friction, which would slow traffic down and make the curves less slippery. My plan was to do that from end to end. So we could still go forward with the paving of the paved area, top the entire thing except for the gravel portion, the dirt portion, with that oil and stone. And that would be traffic calming. It would increase the friction so people wouldn't find the curve so slippery. You'd basically just be taking my project and taking two thousand feet out of it.
Yeah, in truth, yes, ever, sounds ever. In truth, you know, hearing that, I personally would have no problem with it. Whatever you can do to actually make the road safer, you know, would be helpful. What you're stating sounds like you can make the road less slick. You know, on the paved portions already, you know, yes, I totally agree. If we can leave the gravel portion the way it is and increase the friction and make it less slick. Because once again, I say, I live on two blind spots. Even putting one of those huge mirrors up there would be beneficial also, or another sign or two. Because there isn't many right now. Because I have the two kids right now walking to the bus stop, you have to end there. And, you know, we have a lot of practice, you know. Sometimes you have to cross the street so you can, you know, have a better view, you know, from different portions of that road. So I would have no problem in you making that, increasing the friction, making it less slick. Possibly putting up another sign or two, maybe a mirror, making the paved portions safer than they are now. You know, and, you know, for me, you know, right in front of my house, you know, water, you know, goes up in that area. That's just how the road is now. So whatever you can do about that, that would be great.
Well, one of the things we need to do is we really need to have some engineering. We need to have some engineers go out, look at the road and see what we can do about some of the specific items.
Out of the standing, Robert?
Well, just with drainage, see if there's anything we can do to improve. There are a couple of squishy spots there. J.C., did you want to make some comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, note that I did express some concerns about the oil and stone. Although obviously, you know, we applaud that it's not an asphalt proposal and we recognize the difference. But, you know, in general, as I explained in the letter, you know, we were concerned that, you know, over time, it would not necessarily, it would still increase the traffic in our opinion compared to the condition now. But nevertheless, you know, I welcome that.
Well, I'm not talking about doing the dirt section.
Right, I know, so this is an unexpected change and potentially compromised, so I appreciate that.
It's my job to take care of the roads. But I, you know, I have a road program I'm supposed to be doing four miles a year. I'm barely doing two. If I have to take two thousand feet out of that, it's not gonna make or break my budget. If wanting to pave the gravel portion of it is going to now set me back another mile, that really is not doing service to the rest of the taxpayers because it is a public road. And it is supposed to be used by the residents of Red Hook. And not only the people who live there and not only the camp.
But we have to take into account things like GPS, things that have changed.
I understand, and those are things I can't control. And using a poorly constructed road as a traffic calming feature is very risky.
No, are you talking about the dirt portion, or are you talking about the?
I'm talking about the whole thing, okay?
But your compromise of changing the asphalt to make that safer, leaving the dirt alone.
It was part of my original program. Was to go from end to end with an oil and stone surface, including the dirt section. Because in the wintertime, we have ice on the dirt section. In the springtime, we have mud on the dirt section. We have extra maintenance costs on the dirt section because we have to send special trucks with special materials out. This was all part of my presentation. But we can still continue to the discussion, but I'm limited by time. If I don't get to do Oriole Mills Road, if I don't get the answer by the next town board meeting, I have to look at another road. I can't wait till 2018 to decide which roads are going to be complete streets. I can't do that and do my job as Highway Superintendent.
Understood, and I know it's a difficult situation. We have roads that are fairly comparable in our town. And then we have a few roads that are unique. And Oriole Mills is unique because it's got this stretch of dirt roadway. So, and if we do pave that stretch, obviously, that is perceived as a permanent thing. Although there are communities that are actually digging up their gravel streets and paved roads and doing something else with them.
And as far as the engineering of the paved portion, we have no issues with the paved portion that has been brought to our attention. And anything that is an issue can be corrected during the paving process. The color pipes are working, you know, we keep the roads clear. But as far as bringing an extra expense and engineering the road that's already existing, I don't think that that's feasible.
If we're not thinking about the dirt section?
Okay, I really think for many of the reasons that have been articulated, and there are many of them, that we should, we should take more time on this. The drainage on the road, the paved part of the road from the camp down to Old Rock City Road, the drainage on that road is horrendous. And it, it didn't used to be, it is now.
Are you talking about your neighbors runoff?
I'm talking about the neighbors runoff. And an oil, an oil and stone surface isn't going to improve that.
No, that's a private entity that has to take care of the drainage on the property.
I think that before any more money is spent on that end of the road, we need to really look at it carefully. How much difference will it really make? What are the environmental factors? We're right on the Sawkill. And there, and we're right on wetland, huge, huge wetland. So let's look at it and see if it makes sense to even put the oil and stone there in that situation. It's, I just think it's more time that's needed.
Is there a section that is proposed to be paved now outside of the dirt area that is towards Brian's section, is that what we're talking about?
His section is part of.
Most of the repaving then would be on Brian's section, but not, I apologize, we can't seem to get the screen.
Well, let me, before we go any further though, we spent a lot of time tonight. So I want to address alumni from Camp Brian's son and the current foundation. When I read your letters and I listen to you tonight, you're talking about the unique segment of Oriole Mills Road, or what you call the rare patch of natural gravel road. So aren't you only addressing the two thousand feet of currently unpaved portion of Oriole Mills Road?
For the most part, that's the immediate sort of existential threat for us. Is once that's paved, the traffic picks up and it's more simple.
Okay, well, in your literature, that's what you're focusing on.
Oh yeah, in fact, that's the whole point of the letter.
And our project is eight thousand feet Oriole Mills from Yance Road to Rock City, right? You understand that? Is the same with the alumni, you talk about the rare patch of unnatural road?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Right, fine.
Could I, just for clarification, what is the length, Teresa, of the road?
Eight thousand.
Oh, no, I think from the camp, in on the camp's property, it's more than two thousand, right?
The length through the camp's property?
The unpaved portion.
The paved and the unpaved?
The entire project is eight thousand. I don't know the, I don't, it's last month's presentation did the breakdown. And the other thing is that, you know, what I'm talking about is what we do on a routine basis. We have this public way and we maintain it. And that's all we're trying to do here, is maintain that public way. Now, to take that, that project and now.
We don't have, we don't have a vote right now. Teresa could be out fixing potholes and none of us have a problem with it, I hope. And that's basically all she's trying to do, is maintain the road. So if she's got to know by next month, I guess I've already said it pretty clearly, that's where I'd meet in the middle. You know, leave the unpaved section as a long speed bump for the camp. And as a nice, you know, country setting. And allow you to do what you're looking to do. Because you're not talking about recreating, changing, re-engineering the road. You're just basically trying to keep the top in good shape.
I'm trying to keep it from falling apart.
Right, exactly. If there's a way to let her know by next, you know, in this time, rather than say like most, you know, things, you know, let's put it off, and let's put it off, and let's put it off. I'm all for giving her the go ahead.
I would need to get some advice, again.
From who, the Highway Superintendent?
Yes.
I'll give you some advice, Robert, here I am.
No, no, no. Also, a road engineer, I would like to get some advice about this curb in particular. And so before that gets repaved, because again, there's a great vulnerability there where kids will be going back and forth.
So what I'm hearing, Robert, is you're okay with going from Yance Road to the dirt section?
I'm okay, I think I'm okay with that, yeah.
So if that's all we get to do, because you want to study the rest of it?
Yeah.
And what would the road engineers' study be going towards?
Well, I don't know, that's the whole purpose.
Speed limit should be looked at in this entire section.
It's twenty-five miles per hour.
I think it should be lower.
You can't, you have to stay real set.
Won't allow you. I would, I would just look at the wisdom of repaving that section here in yellow on the screen.
And that, that's actually not repaving. That is a thin layer of chip seal.
Right.
Which will add friction.
Just so it'll keep it from falling apart.
It will coat the road, keep the water from going in. It is an inexpensive process. It would be done in tandem with the rest of the road. It would give you a more gravelly surface. It would give you a better country look. So, you know, if you're considering not paving that part, it's already paved, it's just the topping. It's like a three-quarter inch stone.
Is there a road we can see that has that topping on it?
Lots of roads in Mylan have oil and stone. It's an old process, it doesn't hold up as well as asphalt. But for low volume roads, people use it. We haven't used it in Red Hook in a long time.
On top of asphalt?
Yep, it's just a thin, it's called a chip seal. And what it does is it gives some roughness and texture to the road surface. So you don't get that black asphalt ribbon that everybody hates. It's a grayish, it becomes the color of the stone. And as far as the environmental impact, both a gravel road and an asphalt road shed the same water. They're both compacted. Nothing permeates that gravel road because if it did, it would become a muddy stream bed. So you have to compact that gravel road the same way as you have asphalt compaction. The water runs off the same way, it performs the same way. The only difference is with a dirt road, you're carrying more silt into the streams. And that's why a lot of people don't keep their gravel roads. But in two thousand feet, I don't think it's really gonna harm the Sawkill to leave it that way. But these are the misunderstandings that I addressed in my presentation. And also why we do the seeker forum, to see if there are any environmental impacts. And we've done that on this road for that gravel section. And it's not going to change the asphalt section.
There's a section of the road between the camp and Old Rock City Road that's in front of the old Salerno Barn complex where water just cascades.
And that's what the lenders have been fighting with for years. There's a private property that used to have extensive drainage and has let their drainage go. And we've gone and we've repaired the pipes, we've opened up catch basins, we've tried to capture that water. We've put down riprap to slow down that water. It's not water coming from the road itself, it's water coming from a private property that's not taking responsibility for their water. It's just like when someone clearcuts trees and the water starts to run off. There is nothing that the highway department can do to stop that water from coming down. That has to be the resident that addresses that. And so when you have that water flow, you're getting that icing. And you can ask the lenders, we spent a lot of time over there, trying to control that water, increasing the size of the pipes to go into the stream. But the highway department cannot control anything outside of its right of way.
Would the water wash away the new gravel that you put in?
No, no, it's the oil and stone process is like a glue, a gravel with glue. It doesn't wash away anything. If you had gravel on that part, you'd see deep ruts because the water would take that away. But right now, it's just. But right now, it's just sheeding over the asphalt, finding its way over to the stream. And the oil and stone process is like a glue and it's a wear course and it holds the road and it stops the water from getting in, which is how your roads start to erode and get destroyed. So we're just trying to protect the surface.
Okay, and if we could, I would, if possible, if you could wrap it up in the next 10 or 15 minutes. I think this sort of echoes what I said earlier. Having these neighborhood meetings, we had one, a barry town about speed limits. They're really valuable because people get to talk to their government, to their representatives, the people who you employ, really. And I think it's beneficial for everybody. Chris?
Yeah, I'm not going to go over what I think has been very beneficial discussion, lots of points of view expressed. But I do have a legal question. At the last meeting, the town board voted to assume the responsibility as lead agency on unlisted action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And so Teresa had initially proposed it as a type two action, meaning that minimal environmental review was necessary. My understanding is that an unlisted action calls for more, or at least the consideration of more environmental study. And I believe that it, the current action as defined, possibly even without the 2,000 feet, that taken out, would still qualify as a type one action, which means a full environmental impact review.
Not on routine paving of the road.
Let's not jump the gun on that.
Well, I'm just asking, wait, I'm asking not Teresa, but your attorney and you all as people who have dealt with Seeker before.
Well, let me just say, Chris, since.
To find out where this stands.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Let me try to.
Please.
Given that it seems to me that we have willingness on the part of our highway superintendent to entertain a portion of the project that may satisfy to, you know, a large degree some of the concerns so that we can further review the other portion of the road. Obviously, whatever Seeker work has been done previously would quickly have to be revised, okay? Because the project description would change.
Then there wouldn't be a necessity for a Seeker because we wouldn't be disturbing.
If we were just, if we were just repaving, we can, we can.
If we took the gravel portion out, the Seeker goes away.
We can debate, we can debate that, Chris, at another juncture. I'm just trying to move this process along and try to do my little part in trying to come to some compromise that might work for the neighborhood and the community. And I think, you know, paving from Yance Road to where the dirt starts is a really good compromise. We can take a look at chip sealing the other section as well, leaving the dirt portion the way it is. Maybe quickly we can become comfortable with the chip sealing on the other side there. I'm not completely comfortable with the fact that that curve was paved and it was paved, you know, when the camp wasn't even consulted. I want to know, you know, from a road engineer, what some of the other possibilities are for that curved portion? Whether or not there is something else we can do that satisfies the needs of the highway department, the community at large, and the camp and the campers and the folks like you who live in that neighborhood? If there's something else we can do. So I'm comfortable with that as a starting point and it might get us to a place where we can all be satisfied with how this is perceived, yeah.
That sounds great, I just want to remind everyone that it's not just that curve. It's, that's the C and then the S goes along Susan, then along Harvey and then along yours, so.
Yes. Yes. My point is from Yance to the dirt, I think I could be okay. Again, I'd like to have lots more information, but I think I could be okay with that as a compromise and I'd like to know if you all would be as well.
I know that Harvey would be quite fine about that.
Okay. Teresa, would you be okay with that? We can quickly try to look at the chip seal portion.
Well, this seems to be the only way that I'm going to be able to achieve what I need to do.
Okay.
And also satisfy what people want me to do.
Okay.
It may not be ideal for anybody.
Okay.
But I need to get at least the paved portion from Yance Road to the dirt section paved.
Okay.
And as far as the gravel section, you have to understand that it will not be the same as the paved portion in the winter, in the spring or in the summer.
Right.
And if there are any issues that arise because of the condition of the road that is beyond my highway department's maintenance, I'm not going to be responsible on that count.
Right.
I'm not.
Okay. Jaycee, very quickly, and then we really need to, we need to move on.
Yeah, I know, I was going to say, I endorse your idea to look at the curve a little bit more and, you know, if you would support that. I just wanted to point out, pointing out in my letter, you know, again, even though oil and stone is much preferable to asphalt, there are, my understanding that over time it does develop a darker hue. And I mentioned this to Teresa on the phone, but if there was a way, because there's usually a standard choice of material, but sometimes there's an option to specify an alternative. If there was, and I don't know that there is, but if there was a way to have a lighter stone that could.
I wrote a sample of the stone, it's kind of a light gray. We don't get to choose the road colors, unfortunately, but it does not give you that smooth black asphalt look that freshly paved state highway.
Okay, well, I just wanted to point out there.
You're adding to it and you're also making it fit the rural character of the rest of the road. It's not something I would use anywhere else in the town of Red Hook, simply because it doesn't last as long. But on this particular application, because of the scenic nature of the road, it's something that we proposed in order to get this project moved forward.
Yeah.
I want to say the lightest one. I want to thank, I want to thank all of you so. If that works for folks, so we can move forward in a timely manner, I would like to propose that we amend our agreement, our 284, section 284 agreement of the town highway law to, on section A, Oriole Mills commencing at Yance Road and leading to the dirt portion of Oriole Mills at Camp Rising Sun. There shall be expended, not over the sum, and I believe actually the amount that's in the budget is $85,000 at the moment on that budget line. And that should probably do for that section.
What budget line?
Road improvements, I think it's 225, if I'm not mistaken.
What was on the original agreement?
98,000.
Well, no, that was the amended one, the original one was 85 for Oriole Mills. You know, you put the first proposal in, then you revise it and it went from 85 to 98.
Right, so that's a, that's a loose figure right now.
Okay, so 85, 85 is enough, right? Okay, and again, I want to thank you all for participating in your government, it's your government and I hope that we can live with this.
We haven't voted on your amendment yet, right?
Right, we haven't voted, I just wanted to thank you again and hopefully we can find some compromise here.
I'm not going to vote for that amendment.
I want to put in my two cents again.
Oh.
You know, this is, this is something that was designed around a horse and buggy road at the time it was put in place there.
All right. Harry? Yeah.
And the layout of the camp is just horrendous from the standpoint of safety. And I would suggest that while you're doing fundraising, you seriously look at how this camp is designed from a safety point of view and that road should be changed. You should not, you should not, I think we would probably allow you to change it, but I can't imagine charging the residents of the town to move that road. It's unfortunate the way the plan, the way you would design and I think that's probably what you run into now. People are reluctant, reluctant perhaps to send their kids there with a road for the middle of the camp. You have to have a road, it should be a driveway. And that could be a driveway and then a road could be reconfigured. It clears the camper area altogether.
It's something we are considering, we have considered it, we've looked at it. The budget numbers are frankly a little bit daunting, but given time, this is the sort of thing that we can work towards doing. The question is, do we have the flexibility to work with the town in order to come up with a solution? Ask them to do just paving this last section of road that, you know, basically ties our hands on all the sections going forward.
Okay, it's a big compromise. Big compromise, is that something you think you could live with, that we could at least get done from Yance to the dirt portion? And we can come back and, you know, have more information about the dirt section?
I'm more concerned about the long-term perspective.
Right, yes, and I am too, and that's why I think we have to have some information, not just words, some data. Okay, Jim, is that a compromise? You think you could support?
Yeah, my only question is, should, what about the chip sealing of the entire road? With the exception of the 2,000 feet of dirt road? Because that proposal eliminated the eastern end of the road.
Yeah.
And, you know, it will be a few years from now and we're going to have to do a heck of a lot more than chip seal it, is my point of view. And that's why Teresa wanted to do that now to preserve the road.
It also, it also.
It's fine, you know, we've talked about leaving this dirt section.
The chip sealing would have a traffic calming and nature and it would also enhance the rural look and it would also increase the friction on those curves, so the road would be less slick.
Right, so from my point of view, that eastern section, which is the bend and the falls and all of that, would be slowed down.
Yes.
It would be protected and would make it more, give it more of a country look than it has right now.
It would be continuity from one end to the other with the exception of the gravel.
Of 2,000 feet of dirt.
Instead of, okay, now we're on a chip sealed road, now we're on a gravel road, now we're on an asphalt road. Already two pavement changes are enough. You come off that paved section onto the dirt section and yeah, that's a surprise. So you're going to go from asphalt to dirt to chip seal or chip seal to dirt to asphalt? I think the best bet would be chip seal the whole thing, not the dirt section, but the entire road minus the dirt section, 6,000 feet.
Right, that was my point, to modify, to eliminate, to eliminate the 2,000 feet of dirt and stick to the original plan for the rest of the road.
Absolutely.
Let me just interject, I'm not eliminating that possibility. I'm saying for now, there seems to be a consensus agreement that we could move forward there. What I'd like to do is I had Brandy several months ago on a different road situation, lay out for us several options that we could consider for a section of roadway in our town.
If you increase the gravel roads in the town of Red Hook, you're going to have to increase the budget, it's already underfunded.
I appreciate that, but when it comes to a very small curve that is attached to a dirt section already and the amount of money is not going to be significant, I'd be more than happy to increase that portion of the budget to know that these kids will be much safer going back and forth because I think has been.
If those kids ever get there, but when those kids get there, if the camp still gets there, there's a lot of ifs there.
There are.
I'm talking about today and now. And undoing a chip seal is not anything compared to undoing the paving of a gravel section of road. That chip seal is going to cost you more money if you divide it into two projects. If you put money into the project now and you want to turn that curve into dirt at some time in the future, when you have enough money to have a fully funded road budget, sure, you can do that. It's not going to be a big deal.
If that bend or curve by that falls was dirt, that would be an environmental disaster, number one, with the silt in the stream.
And you'd take the whole road out.
And number two, you would look at, drive that curve there. The chip seals is something that's proper and should be done. You want to slow traffic down on that and then protect the environment.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that, Jim. I just would like to get more input on that question and to have an engineer who specializes in roads come and give us advice. That's all. And I think we've got agreement on the one section and it may be soon enough to do the second section this year as well.
I don't think so because you're going to pay twice the cost of mobilization.
Well, why is it twice the cost of mobilization? I'm talking about maybe getting answers to my concerns in time to include that eastern portion.
I don't see that, it took me three months to get to this point.
Well, I think we're making good progress, but.
I disagree with that.
Could I propose something? I think with the town board, we're just talking about one area and one specific project. We have three choices and I would ask the supervisor, the highway superintendent, to perhaps consider this. You take one piece of paper which says we would vote to spend 98,000 to do the whole 8,000 feet of Oriole Mills Road. That's one choice. The board may agree to that, the board may not agree to that. The second choice I would ask for you to do is to say, whatever the amount is, to pave just the portion that the supervisor is talking about, from Yance Road to the break where the natural paved portion begins and however much that is.
Well, it's a double course, it's a pavement.
Whatever it is.
And then it's chip seal.
That's like our second choice. The third choice would be, as Jim says, to propose 6,000 out of the 8,000, in other words, the entire portion from, as you say originally, Yance Road to Old Rock City Road at whatever the price is, which is going to be different maybe. And then that would be our third choice.
So what we're talking about for clarification is there's asphalt placed over the original asphalt from Yance Road to the dirt section, okay? That's the first step. The second step is the chip seal placed over that asphalt and placed over the asphalt that already exists. So it's a two-step process. First.
Right, that's the third choice.
That's the third choice. The first is the whole thing. The second one is half of it. The third is have the whole road be, I'm losing my words here.
The first choice is just the original model, less 2,000 feet of dirt.
Less the dirt.
Right.
Take what my proposal was, take the dirt out of it and you will have the choice that I feel is most cost-effective and will give you the best wear for that road at this point in time and satisfy the look wants and the maintenance needs of Oriole Mills at this point in time.
That would be a calming thing, they'll keep it a country road and then we can reevaluate the 2,000 feet of dirt down the road. All the neighbors that live there might say, hey, you know, this with chip oil and stone, I kind of like that. Because that is a lot easier to maintain than the dirt road.
I'm not really trying to cut in, I just want to ask this question. Are you talking about chip sealing, Teresa, from Yance Road all the way down to the far end?
From Yance Road to the, to the dirt section, we're going to shimwood binder.
To the dirt section. Right.
So that'll be asphalt, that's the first step. After that cures, you put a chip seal from one end to the other without the dirt section. So you have a continuous surface without the dirt section. And you have a wear course without the dirt section. And then I don't have to go back to Oriole Mills Road for 15 years.
You have to maintain the dirt.
Yeah, well.
It's a nice, it's a nice place to go to.
I think it's, I just want to, let me say this. It might encourage people to turn on PELs and not go down the campway if they're on a road like that. So maybe it would have, you know, that would be a benefit, maybe turn some traffic.
I don't see anything about that proposal that is negative.
I see it's all.
Can you tell me approximately how many feet are on the portion from Yance? Is there just a rough estimate that will hold you to it? It's not half and half.
6,000.
No.
If the majority is from Yance.
Yes.
Why don't we just have a couple of things to vote on aside which way we want to go? You know, we have proven enough money so Tracy can do it, see which proposal we can get a majority on a consensus so we can put this to bed.
That's fine, I mean, I certainly can support the Yance to the dirt section right now and I might be able to support later date also the portion from dirt to Old Rock City Road. That's sort of where I stand, but, Harry, does that make sense? Did you understand what I said?
The dirt, the dirt doing what to the dirt?
Nothing, leaving it away.
For now.
He didn't understand you.
That's not what Robert said.
It isn't.
Are you asking everybody, my proposal would be to follow what the highway superintendent proposes to. to repave the portion from Yance Road to where the dirt starts. What's called the rare patch of natural gravel road, which is supposedly around 2,000 feet out of the 8,000 feet. To pave to that point from Yance Road and then to pave from the-
To chip seal.
Chip seal.
Whatever it is, chip seal, I mean, you do the, you do, you call that a paving and then you put the chip seal on the west end.
You do paving, paving up more.
And just a chip seal on the east end, that's, you know, your project.
And then you put the chip seal about a month later, from end to end.
Except for the dirt section.
Except for the dirt section. That's my-
Okay, that's, that was choice number three.
Well, choice number three is my recommendation at this point in time. And if you would see your way towards making a decision, then I would be able to put the plan in motion. And we will not do anything to the dirt section except our routine maintenance, but we will preserve the rest of the road at this point in time at a very good cost.
Okay, Harry, you have some thoughts about that?
Yeah, no, that's all right.
Did you ever vote with that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Very good, so I will then revise.
It's got to be in writing though, so we can make sure we know what we're agreeing to.
Well, we're, we're-
Like, just, somebody make a motion that the original proposal eliminates the two, approximately 2,000 feet of dirt road which will not be touched, with the exception of maintenance as is.
Okay, and the only thing I want to say is that the, the amount that's in the budget right now for that line, I think, is 85,000. Is that something we could do for 85,000? Probably, right?
Now, we also, are we, what are you looking at, just chips? Or are you looking at the combination of chips, the road improvement, the New York caves?
What you just said. Yes, no, this was 98, but the original proposal was for 85 and we have not yet moved more money into those budget lines. But 85 we'll probably do.
No, we, we, the money's there. I'm not going over budget with the combination of Mills, of Mill Road and Oriole Mills, any way you look at it.
Well, that's what you had was 225, you had 140 and 85 and then you came back with a revised proposal for Oriole Mills, which was 98 instead of 85.
Right, so that will be reduced slightly, but I don't have the exact figure, so you're-
You don't think 85 will cut it?
Just leave the, the 98 because as soon as I get the prices, then I will come back again and say, "Now I have this little tiny road that nobody cares about, can I please pave it with this leftover money?"
Okay, I think my only concern is approving an expenditure above the budget line, but we can make a budget adjustment.
It's, it's, it shouldn't be above the budget line, because you take the major roads and you add it to the chips and there's been an increase in chips. Maybe you don't have that reflected in your budget.
Well, we didn't make a budget adjustment.
But according to my numbers, the combination of Mill Road and this should equal whatever, I, I didn't go over the budget amount.
Your proposals were all within budget, that was correct.
Yes.
Yes.
That's, that's the whole point, that's the whole issue.
All right, okay, I think, well, we can look at the number, I think it's two and a quarter, but, all right. So an amended motion now that the 284, Section 8 would then read on Oriole Mills commencing at Yance Road and leading to Old Rock City Road. With the exception of the approximately 2,000 linear feet that is currently dirt slash gravel.
Dirt gravel, right?
Um, okay, and we'll leave in $98,000 at the time being.
Use the word segment.
Um, with the exception of, with the exception of the segment constituting approximately 2,000 square feet that is currently dirt or gravel.
2,000 running feet.
Thank you, 2,000 running feet.
When is this going to be done?
I will send a letter out?
No, approximately.
Around July, the first batch, it's a two-step process.
So-
I'm sorry to, sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood what that motion was. But yes, I'll entertain some more public comment, but not too much because it's almost 10 o'clock.
You were very concerned about the curve.
Yes.
That's no longer taken into account in this. Is there a way to have it be timed? So if you can get an engineer in there within a certain number of time that doesn't exclude, that will make it so she can do her work?
No, that's, that's the issue. And the issue also is that what I'm doing to the road is going to improve the curve at this point in time and you'd have to undo what's there already and we don't have the time for that, but you can still study it for the future.
Yeah, how about that, as a compromise, that we'll, we'll take a look at that curve, we'll take a look at that curve for the future. Last, last second and then-
No, no, just going with what she said, you see no reason why we can't get an engineer out there within a month to just look at it. No one's talking about pulling up the road.
Okay.
Right, no one's talking about pulling up that portion of the road.
No, no, but I have to start making the plan to do the road.
Yeah, of course, of course.
Because engineer can come in and assess it at any time.
As you said before, data, data doesn't hurt, so some more data into this would be helpful.
We'll give it the intention as a-
And if we can have some environmental review of the form that Theresa's prepared, I think it would be wise to look at the consequences for, even with it scaled down on the wetlands and the stream.
I think, you know, there has been some environmental review. This, this proposal now constitutes a repaving, which doesn't necessarily mean that we shouldn't review the environmental implications. However, it does probably change what we have to do from a secret review. And it lessens the requirements. And I know, well, there's no requirements for-
See, there are ag, there are ag district parcels along here, which lower the threshold for when you need-
We, we researched, we researched that issue, Chris, and I think that we feel somewhat comfortable that it's still below the threshold, so-
Yeah, the environmental review for the whole project is almost finished.
I know you're saying that, but we haven't seen it.
Okay, Chris, just, let me just clarify here, but what Theresa's current proposal is now only to repave what is already paved, which is type two. And it's only when you have an unlisted action, which is what came into play. Remember, we're talking about doing the previously unpaid portion, where your question came into play. It is not into play when you're starting with the type two in the first place.
I understand that, Chris, but, but the threshold is lowered when there are ag parcels along.
Yes, we, 25% of our 500.
Only where, Chris, let me just, only where you're talking about an unlisted action, not where you're talking about a type two action.
Only-
A type two action is a type two action that stops the action.
But it takes an unlisted, moves it to one, is what you're saying.
That's right, but it doesn't take a type two to one, okay? I just want to clarify that, okay, yep.
Okay, so we have a proposed amendment agreement.
But what's the end of that sentence though, should not expend not over the sum of?
98,000.
It's, it's currently 98,000, I would feel more comfortable-
Do you want to put in 89,000?
I would put in 85 to be comfortable that we didn't misstep, like at the last meeting, and appropriate more money than was in the line. You can-
Who did that?
I'm just saying on the speaker.
But, but Theresa, the 98 plus the other road was still within the budget line.
I don't think you have the full picture of the budget line, Robert.
But that's, that's, that's Theresa's total budget line, so we know we're gonna spend a little bit less, but we're not sure the amount.
Are you looking at chips?
So we don't want to prove 85 and have it cost us 89 and then have to come back and do it.
Would you like to? Okay.
Put 85, it's not gonna cost us 80, 80.
That's, that's right.
Put 85,000.
I think it's safe, I mean, we want to amend this-
Like 99,000 at the end of the road.
Theresa, it says, it says not over.
Right.
Not over the sum of 85.
What would you recommend we do then?
Put it at 85,000, I'm sure I can do it for that because I'm saving my own binder.
Yes, you're taking 2,000.
And if I find, if, if I have to come back and amend that amount, I still-
Yes, yes, exactly, thank you. I just want to make sure we don't misstep and appropriate more than the line.
I, I, I diligent with my budget, Robert, and I believe that even with the 98,000, it wouldn't be going over, but if you will move this forward, if I change that figure, I'd be happy to.
Yes, okay, not, not expended not over the sum of 85,000 dollars. Okay, so that is the resolution, a compromise agreement. Now, do we have to make some secret determinations that we didn't make at our last meeting, Chris Shaw?
Well, I think you have a different action than the one that you started reviewing.
That's right.
So this action, I think you would make a determination that it's presumably of type two.
Okay.
Because it involves, as your resolution is written, only repaving of existing pavement areas.
Right.
Right?
So-
Make that finding before you move the resolution.
Yes.
If you search out this.
I would like to remind the folks that the town board established itself as lead agency at the previous meeting. That we have listened to the comments and the concerns of the residents and tried to derive a compromise that will hopefully work for all. And that this review, I think, should be classified as a type two action. And so I would make that motion that we in fact classify it as type two. Would anyone like a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Um, Harry?
David.
Any, any comments or would you like to, Jim?
Sure. David. You okay?
Okay. Any, uh?
Uh, yeah, for now.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, um, next up, Chris.
Do you want to consider the amended resolution?
Yes, the amended resolution.
And just to be clear, you're changing the text in A so that it says, "Leading to Old Rock City Road, a distance of 6,000 feet."
E.
Um, excluding, as you read, the segment of approximately 2,000 feet of the, 2,000 running feet of the dirt slash gravel road, the existing dirt slash gravel road. And then you have another place, not to exceed that, $85,000. You have another place, asphalt binder shall be placed on, da-da-da-da-da, crushed stone to be placed on. That should be 6,000 feet, not 8,000, right? In that second.
That's correct.
Place in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. So those, also those numerical changes. Is there a second for that resolution to approve the amended agreement?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think, I think we've beaten it to death.
I think so too. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, thank all of you, thank you Theresa, thank you, uh, folks for your input.
You know where it says 20 feet, four inches and 3/8 of an inch, that's still good, right?
That's still, yes. Thank you all, good night, we have a, a few other items to take care of today. Folks, may I invite you into the other section of town hall? So we can conclude our meeting.
Good people doing good work. Listen, for the alumni, that's not gonna screw up their internal battle with those who want to keep it simple.
No, 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 this is what we worked all right for.
You're using keep it dirt. Yep, this is what we wanted to do. Yes, you've got a lot more issues to handle. Just at least we're getting it right, that would know you're sort of being-
I'm surprised Chris Littner didn't mention that. Yes, you too, thank you very much. Okay, folks, let's endeavor to continue our meeting with the other items on the agenda. Item number two is a resolution to support proposed legislation by our state senator, Sue Serrino, and Assemblywoman DeeDee Barrett. How do you get the charging station? This is item number two, Harry, about the Hudson River anguages.
Yeah, we, I gotta, I don't have the resolution, but I've got the proposed thing, Robert.
Oh, here it is, it's a sample resolution.
No, 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 you should have a resolution.
A full, a full resolution with a fill-
Essentially a resolution, yes.
All right, Chris, what?
They finish a sample resolution.
No, no, no. We distributed.
Hi, Chris.
Goodbye and thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
It's essentially the same, it's two.
Okay. Okay, shall we skip to item number three?
Yeah, we got that resolution.
Okay. Well, you should have had the sample resolution.
No, I did, but I, I read all, you know, I actually read all my emails, I read, I read the thing on, on my Pad Yearbook, so I'm, I'm up to speed, Robert.
Well, that's- Good. Okay, good, we like that.
All right, I get it, I had this resolution.
So Ted Cudsey survived, but just barely. Doing all the analysis for the three bids that we had for our charging station. And we had three vendors submit, one actually submitted a bid that we had to discard because it required a 50% down payment. And as you may or may not be aware, we cannot engage in those kinds of contractual obligations. He, he has a, thank you, Chris, on item number three, I'm gonna have a moment. So he prepared a handy chart for us. And so there was a little bit of work to get apples to apples. One submitted with one year warranty, another submitted with two years of software. He checked out the references for the vendor that he's recommending. And he was, he said the responses he got were outstanding and nothing but glowing or poor, so that's good to hear. The company is out of Steventown, which is fairly close relative to the other vendors, but as you know, we can't use proximity unless it somehow impacts the service that they provide. And so with this, we will get four charging stations. We will get two years of software and two years of warranty coverage.
What's the software, monitor, so we know what's, what?
Well, the software is pretty amazing and not only lets us know who used it, when, the availability. It's, you make, you can make reservations for it, we can track the usage to the minute and the hour. It lets you know if somebody is occupying the space and not charging. It's, it's really a way to document and benchmark the facility. So if-
So you should have a resolution authorizing the award of the contract for 27-339?
I do, I do. For 27-339, and I would like to point out for our attorney to the town, its resolution dated, uh, number-
23.
23, dated May 24th, 2017. And there's a typo in the title of it. And I only point this out because I think there were four versions of this, it was one of those days, wasn't it, Chris?
I can fix it, Chris, electric.
Electrical vehicle. And again, I would like to remind the public at home, watching, if you're still watching after this very long meeting, that the federal government in New York State have provided incentives to make purchasing of an electrical vehicle much more affordable. As, as somebody who recently purchased one, I can tell you, it's really been rewarding to know that I haven't gassed up in the last six weeks. And it's good for our environment, it's been good for our sustainability. So we have resolution number 23, authorizing the town of Red Hook to award a contract for the electrical vehicle charging stations at the town of Red Hook, town hall parking lot. And ISO move, the award is going to be to EVSE contract to plug-in stations online for the lump sum price of $27,339.
Second.
Thank you very much, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So let's jump back to number two, item number two, that would be resolution number 24. It is with regard to this proposed legislation. And for the folks at home, our state senator, Sue Serrino, and Assemblywoman DeeDee Barrett have- have proposed some resolu, um, some legislation that would increase, um, the, um, New York State's role in determining, um, the, you know, the outcome of this, uh, tanker proposal. It would also, um, allow, uh, DEC to designate areas that should be avoided, um, by, uh, tankers and anchoragees. So, um, we have a resolution and Bill, would you like to read it?
This hold resolution on the tanker avoidance zone?
Yep. Actually, this paragraph does it all.
Anyway, whereas the U.S. Coast Guard is currently considering a proposal to establish new anchorage areas along the Hudson River between Yonkers and Kingston. Whereas the town of Reddick is home to numerous natural scenic economic assets, including Tivoli Bay's wildlife management area, the Hudson River Star District, Poets Walk, Montgomery Place, the integrity of which are threatened by the U.S. Coast Guard's proposal. And whereas the town has adopted its local waterfront revitalization plan, its open space plan centers green space zoning, community preservation project plan in an effort to preserve community character, including natural scenic, agricultural and historic resources. And whereas the town of Reddick has documented its concerns about the anchoring of petroleum carrying tankers, including disrupting the economic vitality of the waterfront, endangering drinking water supplies, damaging fish habitat and detracting from scenic beauty and quality of life along the river in its resolution number ninety-two of two thousand sixteen, which was adopted October eighteen, two thousand sixteen. And whereas New York State Assemblymember Dee Dee Barrett has introduced assembly bills which would enable New York State agencies to consider environmental impacts in designating tanker avoidance zones. And whereas Senator's, State, New York State Senator Sue Serino has introduced the same leisure, measure in the Senate. And whereas this proposal would enable New York State to take a stronger role in controlling the placement of any anchorage areas for petroleum carrying vessels to ensure that the needs of the Hudson River and the riverfront communities are protected. Now therefore, be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook that the town board expresses its support for the assembly bill and the Senate bill. And that's the resolution I so moved.
Thank you very much, Bill, I'd like to second your resolve. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you very much. Um, moving right along, item number four. Um, Bill, I'm sorry to tell you, here is a, uh, redubs, a slightly revised resolution that's with regard to accepting street names for the preserve at Lake Scales subdivision. Um, we have maybe, uh, made minor changes to, uh, the language here, but we just wanna make sure of what, what the purpose of this is, which is essentially to, uh, say that we will accept names, um, that have been suggested, um, should all the conditions require to open up that road are met by the, uh, developer. And so I'm wondering would somebody like to, uh, make a motion to approve this, a resolution?
I so move.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Harry, thank you, Jim. Um, was there any, uh, further discussion? No?
No, no.
Okay. Um, so let's take a roll call vote. Harry?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Myself, aye. Very much. That resolution passes, that would be resolution number twenty-five. Thank you. Um, I am going to suggest, because it's the late hour and we do have one or two things to discuss with our attorney, that we only tackle reorg and that we leave our department reports, um, for our next meeting and I think, uh, we might have some.
Good idea.
Well, I can look and update at that point, that makes sense, so.
Thanks. Right, okay. Um, there is, uh, a formality, uh, the tree commission would like us to appoint Cody Hay. You have both a communication from Kathy Michael and from Cody. Um, I'm, I know that Cody has already started working with the commission. He was there during Arbor Day and had a wonderful outfit, his tree climbing outfit, and showed folks, um, you know, just how it works.
So you guys, you guys know him, obviously, Steve?
Yes.
Like a monkey on a tree.
A very, a very, another, I wanna say another nice young person getting engaged and all.
That's great, that's great. That's good to get somebody younger and wild and, and, and watch them do something like that, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, because when I look in the mirror, it's not trending that way.
Well, you, that's true, Robert, you're not so young anymore.
Yes, I know, and this, this job may add to that too.
It's not like me.
Um, okay, so I so moved that we appoint Cody Hay to the Tree Preservation Commission to fill the vacancy, I'm stalling for time, can you hear it? The vacancy with an expiring term
Two thousand seventeen.
of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Thank you very much, Susan McHale. And was there a second to that motion?
Harry.
Second.
Harry, okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all, thank you all at home for, uh, sticking with us through this rather lengthy meeting. At this time, um, I would like to make a motion that we go into attorney client. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Steve.
First release?